And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Brokaw?
Here.
Present.
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 Acknowledgement of all postings. All done.
Done.
Then the public here will begin with PL 1824ZA, Regional Commercial C3 Zone Code Amendment and Zone Map Changes. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Before we get into the details, I just wanted to thank you for being so accommodating with this special meeting for reasons that we'll get into here momentarily. It was really important that we be able to get this project back in front of you before we go to the Board. So, we do appreciate that you were able to squeeze a special meeting into your schedules. And I know that unlike some of us here, you guys don't get paid, so we really thank you. So, we're here to talk about Commercial Regional Nodes again. I just want to acknowledge that RMA Director Harry Mavrogenis is with us tonight in the audience. Again, I'm Darryl Boyd. I'm the Project Planner with Resource Management Agency. Also joining me at the mic tonight will be Michael Groves from EMC Planning Group. So, what we'll do is I'm going to take like three or so slides to kind of give a little bit of context for this, and then we'll turn it over to Michael to actually walk through the detailed modifications, which are the same as the attachment to the staff report, but this way you can see them on the screen. So, on next Tuesday, the 10th of September, we've got five items for the Commercial, Regional Commercial C3 Zoning District and the four rezonings going in front of the Board of Supervisors. That will be what I would call maybe, or characterized as a study session, sort of the first reading, because remember, the Board hasn't seen this before. Unlike some of you who've now, this is the fifth or sixth time, I think, that some of you have seen it. The Board hasn't seen it in a formal setting yet. So, it'll go to the Board on the 10th. And then because of state law requirements, as well as county code, zoning code requirements, they can't really take an action on the proposed project, the code amendment and the zoning map changes, without a recommendation from you. And if you'll recall, when we were here in, since May, there's been some modifications that are made. So, that's what we're going to talk through tonight. There's changes to the code amendment, proposed code amendment. There's two of the nodes that we've made proposed changes in the geographic boundaries. Those maps are attached to the staff report. I think Michael's also got those in the presentation to talk about those in more detail. And I think it's also important to underscore that all of these actions, the zoning code amendment and the rezonings, are all to implement the 2035 General Plan. I mean, that's really, that's really why we're here, is to implement the General Plan. So, again, in May, you all heard this matter. You made findings that the project qualifies for an addendum under SEQA, an addendum to the General Plan, EIR. You recommended that the addendum with the initial studies for each of the four nodes be adopted. You adopted a resolution, including the acceptance of the addendum, and then made a recommendation, positive recommendations, to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. The resolution that you adopted is 2019-10, and that resolution's attached to your staff report, in case you want to refer to it. I think it's Attachment 4 or 5. So, because of those actions, and then subsequent to that, the staff then, based on the comments that were made by the public, and some of the comments I think given from the Commission, went back, reconsidered some of those comments, took them to heart, and is coming back tonight now with some proposed specific modifications to what you looked at previously. Again, those are within the code amendment itself, and Michael will get into those. The reduced acreage on two of the nodes. We've removed the need for the General Plan Amendment. We'll talk about that in more detail as well. But essentially, County Council, County Administration, the county has determined, in reexamining the record from 2015, that in fact, the Board of Supervisors did adopt Commercial Regional General Plan Land Use Designation for Livestock 101. And so, because of that, there's no need now for the General Plan Amendment. The other reason that we're here, as we alluded to, is that under there, there's a Government Code Section, State Government Code Section, that requires us to come back before you with modifications. So, that then that way, when the Board of Supervisors on the 10th and 24th considers the code amendment and the zoning changes, they'll have your recommendation on not only what you saw before, but these proposed modifications we'll review with you tonight. So, we're asking that tonight you focus primarily on the modifications that we're here to talk about, since you, some pieces are still the same from what you saw before. And then, as we say, tonight you'll adopt another resolution, a new resolution, based on your actions tonight and your recommendations tonight. That resolution then will go to the Board for their consideration on the 10th, but really on the 24th, when they make their final decision. As I say, the 10th is really intended to be a study session and for them to see the project for the first time. So, with that, let me turn it over to Michael Groves, and he's going to walk you through the substantive technical changes that have been made since the version you saw in May.
Thank you, Darryl. My name's Michael Groves, President of EMC Planning Group. Appreciate being here tonight and having the Planning Commission take another look at this with some of the changes that we proposed from the staff level to be recommended to the Board. So, one of the things that, one of the things I would like to talk about is the fact that, you know, the Planning Commission has had a number of different workshops and hearings on this, and that's been a very good thing. We've heard a lot, this room was full at one point, and we heard a lot from the public, and we've heard from the Commissioners about what their concerns are about this rezoning, the C3 code being put in and the rezoning moving forward. So, some of the changes we've made to the code reflect that. So, one of the first changes we talked about is the technical modifications to the code is restricting permitted uses by right. So, there was some discussion amongst the Commission and the public about too many uses were allowed by right. So, we've restricted those to only agricultural, and those already allowed in the C2 zone, since there's a component of C2 zone in one of the nodes. The list of uses allowed with design review has also been moved. So, that whole laundry list of uses that came under design review, which would have been done at a staff level, is now moved to a use permit level. And we heard that from the Commission as well, and also from the public about, we want to see these projects come back, if it's a development project, we want to see it come back before the Commission, so that they can actually review it and, you know, weigh in on that particular development, and particularly weigh in on the SEQA process as well as the development is known. And so, we talked about that as a part of this code change. You will now see these uses, and I'll show you the component of it. You'll see the uses moved from a design review staff level to a Planning Commission use permit level. We also added a provision that requires a proof of sustainable water source. And I'll go through that provision for you. And then we also added some emphasis on clustering in the nodes. And the reason for that is that there's some acreage in each of the nodes that it might be on slope, it might have other constraints to it. And so, we want to see an emphasis on master plans coming forward, or use permits coming forward, where there's some clustering involved, where not all of the land's being used for development. So, that is the purpose of that. So, just in conclusion, on the screen, you'll see outside of the agricultural uses and those allowed under site plan review, such as open space, parks, uses that are already consistent with an approved master plan, everything else will require a use permit or a master development plan, and all of it will be subject to California Environmental Quality Act, Environmental Review. Let's look at the code for a minute. This is one of the first components of the code, which says permitted uses. So, you can see the evidence up there where it says crop and tree farming, truck gardening, grazing, and all uses allowed in the agricultural rangeland district are allowed as permitted uses. The longer paragraph at the bottom of that is essentially the paragraph that allows for C2 uses to continue their use. We know that at Livestock 101, there's a section of C2 that already exists. It's about 16 acres. They have the right to continue to use their C2 uses into the future with this provision. Permitted uses site plan review, you can see it's been, it's been basically whittled down to almost nothing. It's parks, playgrounds, and open space, uses for which a determination of consistency is looked for, i.e. you already have a use permit, or you already have a master plan, and you're looking for a consistency determination. So, the staff level reviews are limited to some very straightforward and fairly simple things. This is the code section that we had for design review. You can see it's mostly strike-through. It's all strike-through, so. And what we did is we took that strike-through and pulled it over into the use permit section. So, all of these uses that are now listed were, a lot of those uses were listed previously under a site plan review, which would have been done at a staff level. So, what we heard from the public again, and from the Commission, is we want more control over what happens. We want to see these things, we want them to come before us for a permit. And that's what the code now enforces. So, again, just a continued list of some of those uses. And then, let me back up and just talk a little bit about, at the top, it talks about the following uses, and this is again, under the use permit section, which then leads to the master development plan. So, I want to just combine the two for a second. This section of the code basically talks about that the use permit by the Planning Commission at a notice public hearing is a requirement. If the proposed site development includes one acre or more, or a mix of use types within any node, a master development plan shall be required for that node or a portion of the node. So, it just gives you a sense of it. If it's bigger than one acre, has two uses, it requires a master development plan, okay? Somebody could come forward with one use on less than an acre and ask for a use permit. And then it's up to the Planning Commission to decide if they need more information. Under the permitted uses under the master development plan, we had this section in before. We've basically changed it to add "subject to approval of the Planning Commission," so it's very clear. It also requires lighting plans, landscape plans, the theme design that's already kind of embedded in the code that you've seen, and some of the other things that are required. Some of those things may come to you at the beginning, they may come as subsequent. So, if you might have a master development plan in front of you with some conceptual ideas of signage and conceptual ideas of landscaping, and then they will have to come forward as probably a condition of approval with a full landscape plan or a full signage plan at some point for approval. And those can be approved by staff, once the Planning Commission's already given approval for a master development plan. The proof of sustainable water, I'm going to go through this one so everybody can hear it, it's on the record. We've added this one. It says, "Proof of sustainable water source sufficient to serve the use or uses identified in the master development plan or use permit shall be submitted with the master development plan or use permit application for review and approval by the planning director." This could come in the form of a will-serv letter from a water purveyor, or for onsite water, hydrogeologic report with well, springs, or surface water locations, and sustainable production yield tests. The hydrogeologic report would be subject to review and approval of the Health Department prior to its submittal to the planning director. So, that requires somebody, when they're walking in and handing that application over the counter, they have to walk in also with a sustainable water supply, or otherwise, the application's not going to be deemed complete. The standards, just a couple of changes on the standards in terms of, we put a limit on the hotel room sizes. We had residential caretaker units shall not exceed 30 units per node, and I understood there might be a question about that. One of the reasons for having units, residential units in these nodes, is to try to provide some employee housing, to try to provide some onsite housing. We really desperately need more apartment units and onsite-type housing that we don't have in this community. And so, you know, just a kind of a side story, my son was here and had a job for a while, and, you know, we couldn't find him a place to live. It was just crazy. So, there's just nothing available. And so, that's one of the things that is in the code. So, we can talk about that some more, if there's some questions about that. Auxiliary uses serving the developments, such as accessways, water, sewer, infrastructure, including water tanks, water lines, sewer and septic areas and lines, utilities, and other similar uses, may be developed outside the node boundaries. Example, you might have a node boundary, but your well might be better located outside the boundary. That's okay. You can do that. You can have the well outside the boundary of the node, or you could have an accessway that crosses a place that's not in the node. So, those are provisions that we put into the code. And then here's the provision encouraging clustering. Shall be clustered where feasible, so we've encouraged that for all. This is an example for one, but it's encouraged on all four of the nodes. And then the county may establish a special development impact fee for financing mechanism for the signage. We've talked about this with the Planning Commission before, that we may need to have a regional sign program. And that sign program, you might want to have one at the north end of the county and one at the south end of the county, that lets you know that there's some places you can stop in the county, which you don't have now. And so, if we do a regional sign program, we might have to coordinate it with Monterey County. There may be some cost involved in that, probably is. And so, this just puts a provision in there that the county may be putting together a fee program for this. And again, this is a site design stuff, talking about clustering where feasible, and this happened to be livestock. The boundaries, two of the boundaries have changed since we saw you May 15th of this year. And both of those boundaries are changed to be reduced. So, reduced acreage at Beddable Road, commercial node boundary from 55.48 acres, not spelled very well, reduced to 29 acres. And State Route 129 is from 40 to 33 acres. So, those were both reduced largely because there's prime farm, prime farmland around the edges of those nodes and in some of the nodes, and so we tried to reduce that and preserve as much prime farmland as possible. Here's just a look at those nodes. This is the original boundary for Beddable Road, 55.4 acres. And this is now what the revised boundary looks like, 29 acres. The next one is 129, it was 40.2 acres. The area at the far bottom of the picture is considered prime farmland, so it was taken out for the time being. And I'll show you that. You can see it's taken out of the boundaries. This is for 129, this is a, just throwing in here as a ownership map, just because it's the only node that has more than one owner. So, we threw it in just so, in case there was any questions about ownership at 129. General Plan Clerical Mapping Corrections and General Plan Amendment No Longer Needed. As Darryl talked about, we no longer need the recommendation that you made to the Board of Supervisors for the General Plan Amendment. There's been a lot of research done between May 15th and now on the actual actions, the minutes of the board meetings, the videotapes of the Planning Commission and Board, et cetera. And the General Plan designated Commercial Regional Nodes on land use diagrams. It was the intent of the Planning Commission Board of Supervisors, based on evidence in the record, to delete a node originally identified at State Route 156 101 and add a node at Livestock 101. Prior to certification of the General Plan EIR and adoption by the General Plan, of the General Plan by the Planning Commission, and there's probably some people in this room that remember that day, held a public hearing, it was July 1 of 15, and during that hearing, we took a timeout. And that timeout was that the Planning Commission directed staff that they wanted to change up the nodes. They wanted to move the node that is at 156 and 101, delete it off the map, and move it to Highway, the Livestock 101 site along Highway 101. And so, that General Plan Policy LU 5.3 was edited during that meeting to direct the exclusion of Highway 101 State 156 node. And the State Route 156 node was removed from the Figure 3.5, which essentially was the figure that dictated where the nodes were to go. Due to a mapping error, several figures, including Figures 3.2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, within the General Plan, still included the 156 node and did not include the 101 node. So, there was some problems with the maps as they got finalized, even after the Board's hearing, when they got finalized. So, the county's now just trying to correct that clerical error by updating those maps and removing the incorrect locations and adding the correct locations. So, the Planning Commission further recommended at their meeting that this node be moved to Livestock 101 location. A motion was passed and recommended approval of the General Plan and General Plan EIR with the exclusion of 101 156 and the addition of Livestock 101. The removal and addition was considered at the Board of Supervisors' hearing, and the Board of Supervisors adopted the General Plan and certified the General Plan EIR with the understanding that the node would be moved from 156 to 101. Therefore, the General Plan Amendment that the Planning Commission recommended to the Board on May 15th of this year to include 101 as a commercial node is no longer necessary. So, part of the action tonight is just to acknowledge that and say that we're not going to make that recommendation, and actually acknowledge that we're going to correct the maps. So, those are, they're not big things, but they're important that you just acknowledge those tonight in your motion, and make sure they're on the record, and that's what your recommendation will be to the Board. So, due to clerical errors, we'd like to clean up all those maps, and you can see the map numbers at the bottom of the page, and I'll show you those maps. So, here's the example of the error. So, Beddable Road node, Highway 129 node, 156, and 101, and Rocks Ranch. That was the original map that went to the Planning Commission on that night, and it also, I believe, went to the Board. This is how it should have looked as it was revised, based on the Planning Commission's directions. Beddable Road, Highway 129, Livestock 101, and Rocks Ranch. Next map, you can see there's two nodes showing on this map. So, these are just cleanups. These other, some of these other maps don't really have to do with the nodes. The nodes just happen to be in them. And so, we want to make sure they're cleaned up on all the maps. So, Rocks and 156 are on that node, so we'll clean that up to show it as, excuse me, let me go back. So, you'll see Rocks and 156, we'll clean it up to be Livestock and Rocks. And then Figure 3.4, same thing. You can see 156 is still on it, and the node will get cleaned up to show just Beddable and 129. And then on this one, 3.5, again, you've got the three nodes on it, but where's the fourth one? It's not on there. And the revised map shows all four nodes that it was supposed to be when it was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2015. And then lastly, the last figure, again, just an error of showing 156 again, and the last one replacing 156 with Livestock 101. Tonight's actions, I'll just go through these briefly for you. Darryl already mentioned them, but I want to, I want to kind of reemphasize the actions we're taking. The Planning Commission, as I said in the beginning of this, has held a number of workshops and public hearings on this matter, so you're pretty familiar with it at this point. We want to focus on just the modifications that we've made from your 15th, May 15th meeting to tonight. You adopted a resolution on the 15th and recommended to the Supervisor certain amount of actions. So, county staff is now requesting the Planning Commission supplement that May 15th recommendation to the Board as follows. Adopt a resolution that revises the Regional Commercial District Code to implement the General Plan, taking into consideration the addendum to the certified 2035 General Plan, final EIR. So, again, the first action is just those modifications you saw in the code tonight that I showed you. The second one is recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance to amend the County Code Title 25 to incorporate the new Regional Commercial District, and to recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt ordinances to change the county zoning map at four locations that we've discussed tonight into the Regional Commercial District. And then, three, adopt or revise C3 node boundaries for 129 and Beddable. And four, retract the Planning Commission's May 2019 recommendation for a General Plan Amendment and recommend the Board of Supervisors accept corrections to the General Plan figures. So, that's, that is the presentation. Darryl and I are available for questions, and we'll also be willing to respond to questions after you take the public testimony.
Do you have any questions?
Not this time.
No?
I'd like to hear from the public.
So then, we'll open up for public.
Good evening. I'm Robert Robe. I live at 340 Dante Robles in Aromas. I've been to most of these Planning Commission meetings and watched a bunch on TV when I can't come. So, basically, I wanted to say, I haven't read through the whole EIR, the General Plan, or the General Plan itself. I have been looking online to see how it relates I have been looking online to see how it relates to SEQA and, and General Plan rules and regulations. One of the things I see is that the EIR put together, and like I said, I haven't read through it, it's supposed to help streamline development and construction, that you get it done in early process, so that when SEQA comes around, you've, you've touched basis with a lot of this stuff. But what I don't understand is how you can prepare an EIR in the early stages of 2015 that addresses 16 commercial nodes, we're talking about four right now, that don't even have a definition. Nobody defined commercial three, regional commercial three, until May of 2019, four years after the EIR was submitted. So that's my main gripe. I appreciate Mike coming up here and saying that, you know, we're, public's going to have input. I appreciate that we will have a SEQA process after. We kind of, I think somewhere something was missed, I'm not sure. I'm, I just, I'm, I'm not a lawyer. Lawyers handle that kind of stuff, and hopefully they, they keep the county from lawsuits. I know that's part of their job among a lot of other things. So that was my main thing there. I'm glad, when we do get into that SEQA process, that we do look at overdraft. I mean, our area is in overdraft. We've had wells, again, you've heard it before, we've had wells go dry in our area. I don't know what the aquifer looks like. I know we had to pull a stick out of our well, and we're not as deep as we used to be. And every time you do that, use more energy, use more energy, use more greenhouse gas, more pollution, more environmental issues. So hopefully, we look at all that when it comes. Lastly, I want to talk about signs really quick. The 101 node, I, I, I heard you guys last week, or last meeting, talk about ordinances and updating ordinances, and hopefully, you know, with new staff coming on, that'll look at, and you talked about, you know, trying to help some of the development that we need for commercial areas, which I think we've already got. On a quick search of loan, I can't remember the name, but it's a commercial realtor site. Ten minutes of research, I found 21 commercial real estate sites in San Benito County for sale, so we can look at those other sites.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Natasha Wist, and I live on a little organic farm right at the intersection of, of San Felipe and Shore Road. And I'm here, again, I've not, I've been to the Board of Supervisors, but I want to say, as a positive thing, I think the revised plan is much improved over the initial one. However, I am a member of the Protect Our Rural Communities, and I'm still very much concerned about the state law SEQA that says one should have an up-to-date EIR report before changing the zoning from agricultural to commercial, changing any zoning. And I think that is a state requirement, and it certainly should be done now, because the 2015 report was 2015, and we know how the climate's changing, what's happening now all over the world. And the other problem is 83% of our water in San Benito County comes from groundwater. And as I understand, there's already beginning to be salt intrusion in the southern part of, of the county. And I think that's something that should be carefully looked at, especially if there's going to be a great Wolf's Lodge water park. I have examined that, and I have found out that it is an international hedge fund that bought out the water park, which is one of the largest nodes. I don't know if they'll be able to build under the new conditions, but it's just, it's, it's like a miniature Disneyland, and I don't think the people of this county want that along the highway. So I'm urging you to carefully consider before, as the other gentleman said, there are lawsuits against the county, and, and there's, there's, you're having, we're having, we taxpayers are having to pay for those lawsuits, to see if you can do an up-to-date environmental impact report. And then I understand there's supposed to be at least two advertised meetings for the people in this county to get together and give you input. And I, at the senior center, in the grocery store, at the Y, when I talk to people about this, I find they're generally against these, these, these large developments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Laura Wist?
Richard Wust.
Oh, Richard, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm basically kind of echoing the same thing. I don't have a lot of technical or legal, you know, information on it, but just in principle, and for myself, and most of my friends here that live in San Benito County, some of which have been here for generations, the whole idea, in particular, this water park thing, is just not something that anybody has a favorable disposition on. It's antithetical to, to all the reasons that we live here in San Benito County. I love San Benito County. Natural beauty, rural, it's peaceful agriculture, organic agriculture is one of the, you know, biggest features of this county. And it just seems like to open the door to particularly that type of investment, and it is, it's from an international hedge fund. And, and the resource, all the profits will be shipped to some bank, who knows, offshore. It's not a local business where dollars, just as important as tax revenues, are dollars circulating in our county. And that's what agriculture, small business, that's what that does. It keeps dollars circulating, which is just as important as tax revenues. And for them to extract revenue and just pay off with a little bit of tax money is, is not, not a good value, and the main thing is, it's antithetical to San Benito County and why everybody loves it here. That's why people move out here. And, and those are our resources, I believe. Community, natural beauty, agriculture, local business, community, those are the things that we should be, be approaching developers, how can you help us develop these quality things? Not an external hedge fund targeting us, oh, San Benito County, cheap land, you know, small county, we'll probably be able to roll over them, you know, they need tax revenue. Rather than that approach, find local reputable developers that will use our resources here and enhance the quality of this, this, this gold mine, this beautiful place we have, keep it and not, not ruin it. And if you open the door to this type of, you know, Great America, Santana Row, outlet mall thing, you know, we, we come here to get away from San Jose, to get away from Silicon Valley. And it's, I just think it's a gold mine, and I think it should be, it's very precious, and it should be taken care of, and not, not allow, particularly multinational corporations and hedge funds and so forth, you know? That's just not who we are. And, and most everybody I know feels the same way. So I just want to give, you know, give you one perspective from one group of people, residents in the county, and, and that's it.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Karas, and I'm from Aromas. And I'd like to voice my objection to the commercial rezoning of the nodes along Highway 101 in San Benito County on the basis of aesthetics, traffic, and water. And the two, traffic and water are already admitted in the General Plan that I was reading through in the EIR SEQA review. And so you guys already know that it's going to have a negative impact there. Hotels up to 65 foot tall, gas stations, and strip malls will permanently and significantly degrade the presently scenic corridor through San Benito County. This degradation is not mitigated by disguising the urban sprawl as theme parks and behind a screen of trees. The traffic congestion along Highway 101 in San Benito County currently provides an unacceptable level of service on weekends and during commute hours. Increased traffic at the access ramps due to commercial development will inevitably lead to more traffic turbulence at the interchanges. This is especially true for the Livestock 101 node, which is, is a direct entry onto the freeway in an already hazardous and curbed section of the freeway. And that result of the commercial development is on an increase in commute time for hundreds of thousands of motorists. The Livestock 101, and this is probably the most important issue that I noticed, is that these ranch nodes are on the Coraletta's Pajaro Valley groundwater basin. There's a little finger of that that, that goes into San Benito County, and this is also called out in the General Plan, that, that this is going to impact Monterey County. The basin has been in overdraft since the 1950s. This is causing seawater intrusion, which is headed toward Aromas, and the Pajaro Valley Water Management District is attempting to do something. Increased production from this basin to support 150-room hotels, up to 30 residents, shops and restaurants on each node will accelerate the overdraft and seawater intrusion. Consequently, Monterey County residents will lose more of their domestic water wells and place the Aromas Water Company wells at, at risk as well. There must be a less destructive way for San Benito County to raise revenue. Therefore, I respectfully request that.
Thank you.
Does not approve the commercial rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
Recommend to the Board. Thank you.
Ms. Having, could you repeat the name, please?
Matthew Beechey.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Matthew Beechey. I live in Aromas in San Benito County. I am part of pork, and I've been asked to read the letter that Mark Wolfe has put together. Dear members of the San Benito County Planning Commission, this office represents Preserve Our Rural Communities, an incorporated nonprofit organization comprising San Benito, Monterey, and Santa Cruz County residents, dedicated to protecting the rural character of the region from wasteful, poorly planned, industrial, and urban development of agricultural and rural lands. In an early, earlier letter to you dated May 14, 2019, we explained that SEQA required the county to prepare a subsequent or supplemental EIR, rather than mere addenda to the 2035 General Plan EIR, before approving the above referenced zone changes. This was necessary to account for new site-specific information that was never disclosed or evaluated in the earlier EIR, as well as to avoid unlawful project piecemealing. Although the county has modified the earlier set of zone changes to some degree to reflect changes in overall acreage affected, and has apparently dispensed with the proposal to approve a General Plan Amendment for the Livestock 101 node, the approach to compliance with SEQA remains unchanged. We accordingly restate and incorporate by reference the points and authorities in our May 14 letter, September 4, 2019, page 2, and continue to urge the county to prepare a subsequent or supplemental EIR for the zone changes, rather than rely on addenda to the 2035 General Plan. Furthermore, we dispute staff's determination that the General Plan Amendment for the Livestock 101 node is not necessary, because it was previously designated as a commercial node as part of the Board's approval of the 2035 General Plan. Evidence in the record establishes that the omission of Livestock 101 from the General Plan's land use diagram and other maps was not the result of mere clerical error, and that there has been no environmental analysis of the change in land use designation for this site. Thank you for your consideration of these additional concerns. Most sincerely, M.R. Wolfe and Associates. I appreciate your time. I truly hope that you will consider this in your process. I truly hope that this is not just a change to where you're going to give your approval for this type of land use. It looks like you are stepping back and considering some items, but it feels like, and I suspect it may be, that you're just changing the point that you're making the decision, as opposed to changing your opinions about what the decision should be. And that's a concern for me, and I will continue to watch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Kara Vonck, and I live in San Juan Batista. I did speak to you at the last Planning Commission meeting. Highways 129, 156, and Rock Road, Rocks Road are gateways to our national-registered historic city of San Juan Batista. They're also gateways to three state parks, Fremont Peak, the Mission San Juan Batista, and Hollister Hills, gateway to Pinnacles National Park, and the National Deanza Trail. The county should capitalize on the existing vistas of farm, agricultural, and rangelands that are our cultural assets. How many counties within striking distance of large metropolitan areas can boast such natural beauty? This unique and quickly disappearing rural, rural experience sets the stage for an authentic experience in our historic town as well as the county. We don't need fake Disneyland themes drawing motorists away from our economic lifeblood. If the General Plan was ill-considered, it can be amended. Yes, property owners only have those rights given to them. It is the city government's obligation to zone the land in the best interests of the entire community. Let's capitalize on our unique cultural landscape and let it be our driving economic force. Let's not go for what everyone else already has and is doing. Let's be different. Once lost, we can never get this resource back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I live on Cole Road, and my family and I operate an, at a small educational farm there. Spoke last time, this was discussed, it's good to see you all again. I just wanted to remind you all of some of the concerns that my family and I expressed last time we were here. In this country right now, we're losing 175 acres of farmland per hour. Access to farmland is one of the most significant challenges for young farmers today, and that's some, something we should be concerned about, because right now, farmers 35 years and younger are outnumbered by farmers 60 years and older at a ratio of six to one. This has the potential to drastically impact our food systems, and something we should all be concerned about. I also wanted to draw attention to something that others have mentioned, but we are, my community in Aromas is in a severely overdrafted watershed, and I am immensely concerned about the impacts this level of development will have on my neighbors, on my community, and on my livelihood. If my well goes dry, I cannot farm there anymore. So I, I plead with you to seriously consider your decisions. And finally, we understand that San Benito County needs revenue, but agro-tourism and ecotourism are some of the fastest-growing industries in this, in the country right now. And we, we have so much possibility in San Benito, it's such a beautiful country, and we have this opportunity to give people authentic experiences, connecting with nature, getting back in touch with the beauty of these rural regions in California, which are becoming more and more rare, as opposed to giving them another kind of regressive, kitschy tourist trap experience, which, as others mentioned, you can find all over this country. So I implore you all to reconsider your decision and not recommend the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Michael Strosky?
Good evening. I chose not to speak last time, and this time I had to. I'm a member of pork, and I completely agree with everything that's been said, but I also wanted to say, listen to your constituents, the people that live in your community. I live in San Juan. The whole town came out and asked the city council to recommend you to table this, and they did. But there was a few, one member of the community and one member here came and tried to convince them, and almost did, to unrescind the recommendation of the whole community. It was sad. And one young lady spoke up and reminded the city council that you'd made this decision. So that's what I'm thinking you do, think these things over because of the consequences. You know, we're only here for a short time. You know, the decisions you make today are going to affect this county for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Morris? Jackie Morris?
Good evening. Oh, there you are. Sorry. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jackie Morris Lopez, and I am a resident of San Juan Batista. I'm also a pork member, recent member, first time speaking here before you. I also was at that San Juan council meeting when we asked as a collective group of San Juan residents and Aromas residents to rescind your decision to develop the 101, 156 development nodes. My career is in medicine, so it really kind of throws me off when we talk about nodes. I think of nodes on my body. So I find that kind of a strange semantic word. Why don't we call it what it is, is roadside attractions, you know, cheap thrills along beautiful vistas and hillsides. I grew up in San Juan Batista. I'm a third, fourth generation San Juan Batista, and my great-grandparents, grandparents, parents, my children now are moving back. I love the vista there. The area where you are proposing these developments is right along the border of my town, my place, my neighborhood, and Aromas, my neighbors. It doesn't affect, I don't think, any of you sitting up here. I don't recognize you. I think you're all Hollister people, if I stand corrected. Excuse me. I want to approach this development for all the obvious reasons, the traffic, which we haven't even touched, the water, the overdraft, the lack of water, the impact. I don't hear a lot about the highway impact. There's a SB 743 that addresses that in CEQA, that you have to look at the traffic impact, and I don't hear anyone talking about that. The other thing that I really strongly want to hit at home because I noticed in your packet here, there are a couple of letters of support spouting or recommending that you go forward because it will bring in jobs to the county. Well, I want to address that. As a constituent of Supervisor Patello, I had a conversation with him, a brief one about that, and I said, let me give you some statistics. Currently, and I'm going to pull up my reference on my iPhone here, currently in San Juan Batista, the current median home price is $654,000. You're referring to these jobs that are going to be mainly hospitality-type jobs, hotel, restaurant, parks, maintenance, those types. Let me tell you how much that currently brings in in San Juan Batista as of July 31 of 2019. So, and this is on the upper end of the hotel worker salary, $43,060. I'm assuming that's upper management. Well, any operation can have so many bosses, right, or so many chiefs? Okay, so is that going to afford our resident a $654,000 home? Okay? And also, the current minimum wage for California is $12.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not the kind of jobs we need.
Frank Dora?
I guess I'm the minority because the only one I'm looking to support is the Beddable interchange. I have the RV park next door. I talked to the man several times. His intentions are good out there. He plans on giving a lot of his revenue to cancer research. He wants to do a 50-style restaurant and service station there. We have a lot of people that run out of gas on that highway, that come to our RV park looking for gas, who can use our restrooms because the highway gets congested, so they stop there. It'd be a great highway destination stop for people. Let them introduce about San Benito County, what it has to offer, and create a few jobs. I know the lady's down on, you know, service jobs, but anyway, it is what it is, right? So I'm for it, and I think it lends itself well. I can't speak about the other properties. I have nothing to do with them, and I don't even know what they're about. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Zachary Moore?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Zach Walton. I'm here on behalf of the property owners who are on the property subject to the nodes. I just wanted to speak really quickly about what's subject to review right now and what is not. What's really subject to review are the technical changes to the zoning code that's under consideration. We're not considering the general plan update. That's already been evaluated. We're not considering the wisdom of commercial nodes. In your prior hearing, you've already considered the four nodes. You've considered livestock. You've considered the environmental review associated with those things. So all of those items are not subject to review. It's essentially the three criteria or three categories of issues that Michael Groves and Darrell had already identified for you. It's those three narrow technical issues, and that's all I wanted to emphasize. Thanks very much.
Thank you. So we close the public hearing. Let's bring back to the commission, commissioners. Any questions?
Starting where? Is this just general comment, or can we start at the beginning and look at the questions that each of us had?
You can bring it to the planning department and ask the questions of the planning department, I believe.
Yeah.
We have questions for the planning.
So you'd like planning to engage some of the questions raised this evening?
Correct.
Are we, on looking at number two, the Beddable zone change, we've got approximately 29 acres. And what has come to light since is that it's also part of the Anza Expedition Trail. And so if that is developed, the National Park Service will probably weigh in to bring that area for, to increase the economic development of the county, which is part of their mission. So I find that that is a big plus. Development standards, 25.16. The sign maximum, signage is maximum is 45 feet, and the structural maximums are 35 feet. So that's less than three stories, correct? Approximately.
It's 35 feet, but you can increase that height to no more than 65 feet if you have a master development plan and you're showing how you're doing that.
Oh, I see here. Master development may allow heights up to 65 feet.
And part of that is, you questioned about three stories, and we run into a lot of issues on the zoning side, standard side, about somebody wants to put in a parking garage underneath or half a parking garage, so half of it's out of the ground and half of it's in the ground. Those kind of things run into problems when you have very strict height limits. So...
Architectural features.
Architectural features, those types of things. So again, we're giving some flexibility there in the code, but they have to be able to do it through a master development plan and come in and show how they're doing that to the planning commission.
Within the verbiage that we've been given, it has been emphasized a number of times that there will be significant landscaping and other elements that will shield the highway from seeing a highly-developed area. So that's what I'm expecting is that there's not going to be a lot of visibility of structures.
I think that's largely true, and we have put in the code requirements for landscape plans, signage plans, circulation plans, et cetera, so that you'll have a whole palette of things to look at as a part of a master development plan when something comes forward, including that height that you're talking about. And so landscaping will have to be compared to height. I think the one location that will be probably the exception to the rule will be Beddable because Beddable is right along the freeway. It's flat, and it's pretty exposed. The other three, starting at the south, Rocks Ranch is not very exposed. It's got a huge line of vegetation along the creek there that really shields that property pretty well, and they already have a freeway interchange at that location that gets them access right to the freeway. Livestock 101 is somewhat exposed, but it's not, it's a glimpse. When you take that corner and you're coming around, you'll see it, and it's gone. There's a lot of hillsides in front along Highway 101 that actually block the views of livestock 101, so you can build in behind those. So what I would expect the planning commission to do is look at a master plan and say, are they building with the land or against the land, right? Are you building in behind the nodes, and are you using proper design features to actually shield the building? So I think there's a great opportunity there. And Highway 129, the big issue with 129 is it's really back off of the freeway. So it's away from the freeway and kind of turned around the corner, so it doesn't have as much exposure as they probably really like as a commercial developer, if you will.
If I could, through the chair, I'd like to address the same response and build on Mr. Grove's response. There's also the potential, when you as a commission review an individual master development proposal, that you like the architecture and the theme so much that you say, should we hide this whole thing with landscape? I mean, commercial businesses thrive on people knowing where they are. So the way I think it's envisioned is that there's going to be a very specific review if anybody has a development proposal in front of you, which the whole slate of architecture, colors, landscaping, visibility, signs is going to be laid out there. You may not want to just hide everything because, so, I mean, if we have the impression that, you know, yes, we can landscape, you can landscape the heck out of something, but... So I'll just stop on the editorial right there. But the thing is that it's not a done deal for any one of the designs right now. No action being talked about right here, even put in front of the board, turns the earth or puts a stick in the ground. When anybody wants to do that, they're going to have to put a comprehensive plan together and present it to you in a public venue.
Section D, did you want to comment on that through the chair?
Go ahead.
I just, I had a question. Section D, the hotel rooms parentheses and associated public and back-of-house space parentheses, does that include conference rooms? Are these, are we prohibiting large conference rooms in these hotels?
It's usually set up as an average, so it's a per-room average, so they have to take their conference rooms out of that average.
Okay.
That's how you typically set up the code.
Okay. And through the chair, also in section D, residential and caretaker units shall not exceed 30 units per node. That number seems extremely high, and if it's 30 units, are those going to be restricted to employees only so that this is not a, become a rental development? That would be my concern. I think that number should be a lot lower.
And I had heard that you had a concern about the number. We have nothing in the provisions currently that restricts them to be employee housing at this point, all right? It's something that I would have to turn to legal counsel and say, you know, is this something we want to add to the code or not? Right now, we have not proposed that. So we, I think we felt as staff, and I don't want to speak for all staff here because there's more than myself, but I think we felt that there was a real, as I said earlier in the presentation, there was a real need for housing, and if you can house some people on site that work there, I think it's a big advantage. Now, whether they turn out to be that or they turn out to be apartments, there's still a big demand for that as well in the community, so.
I think, Mr. Chair, the other thing that I would add is that part of what we're trying to do with this code is strike a balance between being overly prescriptive on what we expect of people, but also being flexible enough, providing enough flexibility to let the marketplace figure out what's appropriate or not. And so I would just say that, you know, this is probably a good example of that, that allowing for a cap certainly provides some assurance that you're not going to get, you know, a large residential, you know, apartment building or something, but trying to provide at least enough units that may make it viable for employee housing and things like that. So it's trying to strike a balance between those.
So if we were to not change that number through the master development plan, we could on an individual basis then?
You could. And so you can do restrictions on an individual basis, you can do restrictions on condition, you can do a requirement for affordable, a portion of it being affordable. There's a number of different ways you can do that, as the codes exist currently within your county, that allows you to make those decisions when you see the actual master development plan. You know, what we envisioned, I think, as planners is you're going to get some commercial uses. It'd be nice to have some kind of second-floor residential units maybe facing the backside, not facing the highway, but facing the creeks if it was Beddable, or, and, you know, Highway 129 maybe facing the hillsides or whatever. But you're getting some ability to have some potential residential on the site that creates a more lively site because of the walkability of it and also potential for employees.
Through the chair. The limitation on hotel stays or visitor stays is 30 days is what I've seen in here somewhere.
That's typical.
Commissioner?
Yeah, through the chair. Just want to go back and talk a little bit more about the change that's requested of the planning commission. So in May, the planning commission recommended to the board to amend the general plan to include livestock 101 as part of the nodes. So we'd already made that recommendation. Now, the request is, we don't need to make that recommendation because of the research that people have done, looking back at what was the intent. I'm just wondering, why go against what the commission has already said, which was, hey, let's go ahead and recommend to the board to amend it? Maybe it's belts and suspenders that we're talking about here, but help me understand why we feel confident that we can just go ahead and recommend the changes to the clerical error as recommended by the planning department.
I think the first way I would start to respond to that, Mr. Chair, is that it's, what's being said is it's no longer necessary, right? So before, we were taking, say, a conservative land use approach to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do, but based upon reexamination of the record and so forth, it's been determined that the general plan amendment is no longer necessary. So essentially, that's what we're saying, is that we sort of moved from the need to do the general plan amendment from a land use perspective to moving, having moved into the legal realm of looking at the record, what did the commission recommend, what did the board supervisors actually approve? And so based on this determination, that the board, in fact, did approve the elimination of 156 and relocation of livestock 101, that the general plan amendment's not, it's not necessary. It's not...
It's my belt and suspenders comment, so not necessary, but what's the rationale why we're going against what we had originally recommended and now...
Yeah, it was established...
Yeah, it was a staff recommendation, and you, as a Planning Commission, approved that recommendation to do a general plan amendment. We don't take general plan amendments lightly.
Yes.
Because you can only do four a year in every jurisdiction, so we don't take that lightly. There was a discussion after the Planning Commission meeting about going back and reviewing all the evidence in the record. And all the evidence in the record, including videotapes and minutes, et cetera, showed that not only did the Planning Commission direct the Board of Supervisors in their recommendation that livestock 101 should be in the general plan and be on all those maps that we made mistakes on, right? But when it got to the Board, the intro comments to the Board of Supervisors on that day basically reiterated what the Planning Commission said and said livestock 101 is to be one of the regional commercial nodes and to replace 156. We are deleting 156. It was clear as day in the record, in the videotapes, and in the documentation that we saw. So, one of the concerns was, is you print out a general plan, right? It gets put up on the website, and all of a sudden, there's an error in the graphic, and everybody takes it the wrong way, right? And so, we want to clean that up, and that was part of it. So, our biggest emphasis at your last Planning Commission meeting on the 5th was to clean up. It was a cleanup measure. We don't need to do anything more than have you acknowledge the cleanup. We don't need to do a general plan amendment to clean it up. So, that's the difference. A general plan amendment requires us to go through a process with the Board of Supervisors and have them agree to a general plan amendment, et cetera, and we only do four of those a year. We really don't need it. It's not necessary. It's overkill.
And then, my second question is somewhat related to that. So, as part of the general plan update in 2015 that included these commercial nodes and three of the four nodes were clearly identified in terms of the maps, the fourth one may have been discussed and agreed to, but the maps were not updated. As related to that general plan amendment, there was an environmental impact report done. Did that environmental impact report include livestock 101? Or how should I think about that environmental impact report as related to the general plan update at that point in time with respect to livestock 101?
Right. And Rachel's here, who's been working on all the environmental documents, so I'll let her speak to this if she has additional comments. The general plan, EIR, that was recommended by the Planning Commission and certified by the Board of Supervisors in 2015, looked at livestock 101 like it looked at all the properties of the county. Most of the analysis is done on a population growth, employment growth, you know, those types of bases. It also looked at livestock 101 on the uses that it was allowed at that time, which was basically rangeland and C2. So, those were all analyzed. Plus, in addition, the EIR analyzed four nodes and the impact of those four nodes, one of them being at 156, which the Planning Commission said, we want to pick up and move, and we want to move it to livestock 101. So, not only did it look at the impact of four nodes, and that means traffic, water, and all of those types of potential impacts, but it also looked at each piece of land on a general sense, on a 10,000-foot level, right? It's not project-specific. It's a, as we talk about in the industry, it's a programmatic-level EIR. We're at a programmatic level when they approve the general plan. This is a step off of that general plan that we're implementing tonight, which is basically zoning implements the policy of the general plan. And so, that's what we're trying to do. The next step is development plans, and that requires a whole nother level of environmental review, which is a project level. So, we just kind of want to tier that down.
I just want to understand in terms of what was done at the time the general plan was approved, and if there was anything specifically done regarding livestock 101 as part of the nodes analysis. It sounds like not specifically for that, but it was more of a general view of if we were to do four nodes, here's what the impact would be generally to the counties.
Remember, they didn't say, okay, Bedable Road, let's analyze that spot for a note. What they did is the EIR analyzed a group of acreage and a potential group of employment, population growth, and it actually had a table in it that calculated out square footage. You could potentially, it had an FAR, which is called a floor area ratio, based on that acreage. So, if you have a certain amount of acreage, and you take a floor area ratio, and you multiply it, you get a certain amount of square footage. So, it analyzed all of that as a part of the general plan EIR. So, it's, again, at that programmatic level of review. So, it analyzed four. It analyzed a group of acreage, and it analyzed it at a potential square footage. If you remember the conversation at your May 15 meeting, we restricted in the code the potential square footage to about a quarter of what was in the general plan EIR.
Okay. No, helpful. And then, just because it came from the public, is there a shelf life to an EIR with respect to changing the code for, in this case, with the C3 code?
So, essentially, the implications of the 2015 EIR to now in 2019.
Yeah, there, I like to try to make some joke about it, but I won't.
I like jokes.
Because we've got the attorneys in the room, so, and it's public. So, no, there's no shelf life on an EIR, and, you know, we look at them for their adequacy. What you're doing is you're assessing them for their adequacy of what they analyzed at the time to what you're doing now, what's the action you're taking now. So, that's the comparison that you want to look at. And there's, you know, there's been plenty of cases in California about that subject matter that you're talking about, the adequacy, and whether, you know, somebody can tear off of that and use that document.
And it might make a difference between whether it's a program EIR, policy document versus a project-specific EIR.
Sure.
Right, you're talking two different things.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Right, I've had, you know, I just saw just recently a city that they had like a 2005 EIR, and it was on a project-specific, and they wanted to do an addendum on it. Now, maybe it's palatable, maybe not. I mean, it's challenging, you know, because a lot of things have changed since 2005.
Thank you.
For order, Eddie.
I did have just kind of a clarifying thought. So, you were referencing to the necessity of, you know, bringing up the addendum. Now, when you say necessity, is that invalidating? Like, if we chose to acknowledge that, you know, we're not going to do that because it was already brought up in the Board of Supervisors and kind of passed, is that, like, for a legal parameter, is that invalidating that? Or is it just we're dropping it, and it's end of story there?
I think, just for clarifying question, Mr. Chair, you're talking about the general plan amendment? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sorry, apologies.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, I think the basic answer is we're asking you to retract that recommendation. We're going to be asking the Board to make certain actions on their meeting, and general plan amendment's not going to be one of them unless you direct us to do that.
Yeah. Just a clarifying question on that.
Okay. Any more questions? Go ahead.
No.
Editorial comment.
Never mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyway, just for clarification, we're not approving any construction or redevelopment at this point.
Correct.
I mean, it's still got to go through, any developer's going to come and have to do the EIR, correct? And bring all the documents necessary.
We'll say a project-specific environmental review that looks at earth, wind, fire, traffic, all those things. It's not foregone that anything is exempt nor an EIR, but each one will have a specific environmental review once there's a development proposal on the table.
And they have to meet all the criteria, like the water especially.
With notice, public hearings.
Yes, uh-huh. So, we're just making a zone change and a map zoning change. Is that correct?
Correct. The last slide would be great to have on the screen again with tonight's actions for what's being considered by the Planning Commission.
So, Commissioners, do I hear a motion for approval of the zone change and the map change?
We're going to, I make a motion to retract the Planning Commission's May 2019 recommendations to amend the general plan and recommend the Board of Supervisors accept corrections to general plan figures 3.2 through 3.6.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All against? They're not against that one, is it?
I'm sorry, let me see if I captured the action. Commissioner Gibson made a recommendation on what's looked at as number three here, which is the retraction.
Retract, yes.
And that that motion was seconded by Commissioner Egland, and I believe the chairman's asking if there's any additional comments regarding those motions. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, it was a five, five zero?
Five zero.
Oh, it went five zero.
Five zero.
Very much. And the other items?
The other items for the zoning amendment and map changes, do we hear a motion?
I move to adopt revised C3 nodes boundaries for state Route 129 in Bedabell to the ones that we saw today.
To facilitate discussion, number one is those items with the sub-points are embodied in the attached resolution.
They've got a resolution, yeah.
Pardon me, so the action on the resolution would revise the C3, would recommend to the supervisors those several actions.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if I may, there's a resolution, a draft resolution at the back, or actually, it's the first attachment after the staff report, I think, is the, or the second one, is the draft resolution. So, basically, that draft resolution, the way it's drafted currently captures all of these, all of these items, and so, the Commission doesn't really necessarily need to...
Do individuals?
Do them individually. If you drop the resolution and the County Council may want to weigh in.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-10.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not dash 10.
What's the dash?
Let's see what in there. Is it dash X?
Excuse me, Mr. Planner Boyd, what was, I'm sorry, Darrell, the resolution number that you found would be in session tonight was in about number 17?
18.
Okay, so two.
2019-18.
2019.
I'll change that to 2019-18.
Thank you.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That does it. Do we have anything else? That's it?
Was, and the boundaries for 129 in Bedabell were acted upon?
Okay, number two.
It was all encompassing.
Just as a double check, because I'm not seeing it as an action item under that resolution. Mr. Boyd, is item number two on the Board, the revision to the C3 node boundaries, making those both smaller, is that wrapped into the resolution action they just took under what's on the Board as number one?
Mr. Chair, yes, that, yes, that's wrapped in.
Everything was all on the resolution.
I have a recommendation from Council, just to have a straw vote on that to make sure that, a motion, please.
Thank you, motion.
You're asking for number two, adopt revised C3?
Yep. The boundaries.
I move that we adopt revised C3 node boundaries for state Route 129 and Bedabell.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any more, Kevin?
No, there's nothing more on this item, and I do want to express our thanks for you coming together and also for the public coming out with this short notice meeting. The regularly-scheduled Planning Commission meeting of the 18th is still on for two weeks from, two weeks from tonight.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I forgot, I have to second it.
Second it.
You seconded it.